Welcome, everybody. September eighteenth zoning board meeting. I'd like to start off with roll call.
Ben Farrell present.
Andrew Kelly present.
Paul Lorenzo present.
Marco Di Martino present.
And Eric proposes present. Next item would be to approve the minutes from the April seventeenth meeting and the July seventeenth.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple corrections to make.
Sure.
On the April seventeenth minutes, the second item, I believe the conclusion is incorrect. I think it reads. No, 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 no. I think if you pull it up, you can go to the approval statement of the second petition. It reads like it was just cut and pasted from the first one. And then in the July meeting minutes, in the section where it says Ben Farrell had a lot to say. No, no, I like it. I would have said brought out a soapbox, but there's a sentence that where that the word corporal is used instead of the word corporate. So I don't know if we approve that or if we approve them.
Individually?
Did I make a motion that we approve both with those changes?
But with the approval for the April seventeenth minutes based on that it's a whole voting approval session, I want to go back and confirm what was said, what was voted on for that. Prior to making anything.
Did we pull up that that one? Because I think it's a pretty self evident change.
I don't know.
Oh, okay. All right. Never mind. In that case, I make a motion that we approve the the July meeting minutes with the corrections noted.
Second.
Now we go. All in favor?
I.
Okay. The July or the we got April, so we need to vote as well.
If you want to just pass pass the matter, it'll it's just a minutes approval, so it'll just stay on the agenda for next time.
All right. We need, okay. So leave it alone. Okay. Moving along, old business. I believe this has been withdrawn, but I'm going to read it anyway. Heather Hopkins, the Deadco, excuse me if I mispronounced that, for Bristol Holdings LLC, property located thirty thirty-three East Main Road, tax assessment map lot, map thirty-one, excuse me, lot one twenty-nine, seeks dimensional variances for ground mounted signage in the number of wall signs allowed. Withdrawn. So I think we're good with that. So that concludes the old business. And per discussion with Aaron earlier, we have four items on the agenda today. Due to one of them being, I believe, continued. Number four, we're going to start off with. Marcos, I apologize, I'm not the best reader here. Carpeas, if that's correct, for property located forty cul-de-sac way, tax assessment map thirty-five lot B six B, the applicant seeks reapproval for dimensional variances to locate a container shed over a hundred twenty square feet located in the front, rear and side yard setback. The applicant received conditional approval November twenty-three with a two year expiration date. Would you like to number one? Number four?
This item is being continued.
Yeah, okay. All right. So now we're back back to the top. Number one. Can you make a motion to continue? Oh, excuse me.
I make a motion that we continue the the Marcos Carapia applicant till the next scheduled zoning board meeting.
How's this work?
I don't think there's anything to discuss. It's just a continuance.
Can we can we vote? And then do you want to? Can you say something or?
I mean, it's up to you, but I don't, you know, you should have a vote first.
Okay, can we vote? And then you want to? Is that okay? I'll second the motion.
You can't second the motion, though.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Close. May approach?
Mike DePaola, ten seventy-four East Main Road. I have no idea why the town is enforcing that violation on this gentleman. They don't enforce other violations on other containers that I reported numerous, I mean hundreds. And they've gone above and beyond to ignore them. I mean, I report them and they give me everything under the sun why they won't enforce them. So why are they enforcing this on him? And I had nothing to do with this. I'm an immigrant. I was born in Italy. Is that the situation? Because he's an immigrant?
Yeah.
Because I mean, it's a little weird because they're enforcing this guy about this violation on the container being in the front yard. And I've talked numerous times to Aaron. And for whatever reason, I'm sure Gio has the emails. I'm sure everybody probably in town hall has my emails. But they're enforcing this violation on him. But they're ignoring all the other violations, starting with Ben Bow Basin, numerous, numerous. I mean, there's probably a hundred. And I'm not exaggerating. There's a hundred going back five years. They enforced it on me. I had to sell my container. I had to comply. But why aren't they enforcing the rules equally on everybody? That's all I'm asking.
This one came across us. I can't talk about it. All right.
Can't talk about it?
Well, I guess I guess we've continued this one. So I guess the question we could ask is, and I don't know if this is the right opportunity for the.
No, it's not the right opportunity. I think that's the issue. It's, you know, you're welcome to allow a citizen to chime in, but it really shouldn't be a debate with the the board if it's not an item on the agenda, and this item is no longer on the agenda. Certainly, the staff can can recognize the comment and and, you know, address it at a future date or.
How do I get on the calendar to address this? How do I bring this before the board and say, look, there are fifty violations. Here are the addresses. Some of them date back five years, not two months, two months, and say, oh, we don't have time to go after every single one. We're not talking a week. We're not talking two months. We're not talking even a year.
So the process would would be that if you wanted to submit, you know, a list of those items to the to the members, one of them could choose to take it up in a future meeting if they if they decided.
If I submit it to you guys?
You'd submit it through the court to the entire planning board. You can submit to council.
I think it's.
But it's up to it's up to the board to.
It's fair that he's heard, you know, in a way that if that is the case, I don't know the exact inner workings, but I think, you know, there's got to be some avenue to present that and give them, you know, clear answers to how that's.
Why?
What focuses are, what what deems this one is?
Yeah, it may be that one of the members asked, or the chair certainly can ask to place on the agenda sort of a a staff review of the process, just so you understand when these when these questions and when these matters come up, you know, is it? What's the context for? Mr. Carapia's request.
When you get complaints on, you know, you know, you guys look into the complaints. You know, does that should that be presented to us in some fashion? Or like, how does that?
I think it's I think it's certainly legitimate to have you have that update or briefing from the staff. Because when you when you consider, for example, Mr. Carapia's application here, it would be good for you to understand the content, the townwide context. Okay, why do we, you know, issue permits like this? When, you know, if people aren't applying, is it because they don't think we would approve it? You know, what's the what's the process? I mean, really, that's the policy that this board sets. And so to get yourselves up to speed on what the on the ground situation is, is certainly relevant to the planning board's mission.
I can't believe it's been two years, almost two years since the scan process.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I don't think it has been, but can I make? Sorry. So what is your name, please?
Michael DePaola.
Sir, Ben Farrell. So 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 my suggestion, you know, often with with applications, we get butter letters or interested party letters that come to us.
I'm an interested party.
Yeah, yeah. So 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 if you if you submit that kind of a letter, it'll come to us.
I didn't know that I had to send it to you. I
No worries, no worries.
In the past, I was told to report it to the zoning officials, the building officials, the town solicitor, to the town administrator, to the zoning board, to the town council members, to everybody at town hall. I think I resend this fifty people on my email. And it all goes on deaf ears. Now, I mean, I understand that maybe one or two might slip through the cracks, but there's tons of them. We're not talking. And I mean, why are they picking on this guy?
Yeah, so as as the
That's fine. We can we can have a meeting and we can discuss this at a later time. I no longer live in King's Grand, but hey, you know what?
Thank you.
If I had a container, if I still lived in Kings Row, I would probably put one there.
Thank you. I think that's I think it's fair way. So you'll present. One of us and we can.
I will send it to her and Heather and then she can vote it to you guys.
I have nothing to do with this. You send it to the town clerk.
Me, Eric, sorry.
I don't know the process for that. So I mean, if we can, if we can. Yeah, well, no, no, I just meant like after that, you know, I mean, just help get some clarity so we can all be heard and understand. Okay. Move along here. The next item of on the agenda here, Court Chapelle, representing three nineteen Riverside Street LLC for property located three nineteen Riverside. Tax assessment map fifteen lot forty-two, the applicant sees a special use permit in a dimensional variance to build a deck in the rear setback.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Name and.
Court Chapelle on behalf of the applicant Stephen Kelly, or the owner Stephen Kelly. To my right is Abby Ismail. She is a member of Prince of the Engineering. She'll be testifying regarding the site work if necessary. I believe Stephen Kelly's on. Is he? I don't know that he needs to be, but the petitions before you, it's pretty straightforward. I just want to go through what we're asking for and what I understand under the new rules, or what findings you need to make and the order that you need to make them. There are two dimensional variances. This is a lot that's only point zero nine acres. It's known as a substandard lot of record. And when you deal with setbacks, we go to our ordinance in the R ten area, and it tells us how many feet. If we have a ten thousand square foot lot, our structures must be from the property line. Under a new state statute, we use division. And we say that if we're point oh nine acres, we divide that into the forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet. We get a number that we are less and we multiply the, in this case, the rear yard setback. And the rear yard setback would get reduced, in this case, to seven point six feet. I think Aaron in his memorandum, put that out to you as well. The proposed deck is going to be four point four feet away from the rear yard. And that requires a three point two foot variance, dimensional variance that we will be asking you for. It is the rear yard in this case, which is the water. So there is no immediate neighbor that is affected. And if you have had the opportunity to go down there, you'll see that almost all of the houses on Riverside hang have decks that hang out in closer proximity, either near or to high watermark. I also should point out that there's a dock that's on the property that's all been approved by Coastal Resources and all permitted properly. That actually means the rear yard setback is zero because everybody's dock goes out to their property line before it goes out to their riparian rights. And of course, this is inside that. You're going to hear that prior to Mr. Kelly, or I can tell you, Mr. Kelly buying the property, it was exactly the same. He didn't cause any of the problems. He didn't do anything. He has just renovated the house under the exact same footprint, with the exception of the dock. And when doing so, and the living room was done, there was only a small preexisting deck that tied it to the side. He was hoping that he could have a deck that was five feet wide, so that when you walked out of his front out of that, he'd have room for a chair and not have to move a chair and just use it as a walkway. That's really the limited person a little bit more usable of the deck to take it out five feet instead. We've all been here for twelve feet decks and fourteen foot wide decks and sixteen. We instructed him to pass our standard of minimal relief necessary for the enjoyment of your property. That's why it's five enough to be safe to walk out and turn, even if you had a wheelchair. But also, if you put a small table or chair, you wouldn't have to maneuver every time that somebody was going to use that portion to get to the other other portion of the deck. You'll note that there's no request for sideline variances because the it's no closer than it already was. So that was not required. So the two variances are again the three point two feet rear yard setback. And then lot coverage. Lot coverage is also a new formula. You divide the current lot, I'm sorry, the size of the lot. And then you add to the twenty percent that you would have if it was a ten thousand square foot lot. And that would come up to about thirty-two percent is allowed. It's already forty-seven percent, and I understand that. But the small deck takes it to about forty-nine. And so it's a under three percent lot coverage increase, but it takes it to that number that's before you in Aaron's. My opinion, I think Gino will or Gio will tell you that, but the first thing you have to do is to go on the variances and the standard that you must apply is that there are unique characteristics to the lot. I believe the unique characteristics are how small it is and how in its proximity to the water. The hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. And in this case, this was exactly what it is, except for his dock. He merely is trying to get it more usable back deck from a couple of feet or three feet that was originally there to the five feet. The granting of the crested variance won't alter the character of the neighborhood. And I don't know if you've had the opportunity to go down there, but I did use our friend Google Earth to show you that all of the houses. As I'm going, but all of the houses basically are what appear to be very high percentage of lot coverage. And if the adjacent properties all have decks that hang out at least to the mean high water or as close as this one does, it's another dock, as you see, that's just two two houses down. And in in granting the dimensional variance, you also need to find that it'd be more than a mere inconvenience not to have just a three foot wide deck. I hope you can find that and that it's a minute used to be the least relief necessary. It's now a minimal amount of relief to justify the needs of the applicant. So I think we meet those criteria. If you get a chance to successfully vote on the dimensional variances, under Article Six, a special use permit is also required when you alter a nonconforming lot. That has a couple of different standards. The first standard is that the the increase wouldn't allow would allow adequate space for fire protection. This increase doesn't have any effect on fire protection. It's only to the rear. Arguably, if somebody fought the fire from the water, it'd be a little closer, not further away. But it certainly shouldn't affect that criteria. The second is adequate light and air between buildings. Again, the preexisting condition may not be great for air and light between buildings. But by going at a level deck in front of the house that's uncovered, it will have no effect whatsoever on air and light for neighbors. The next is that it won't alter the character of the neighborhood adversely. And again, I've shown you that picture that this is the neighborhood. This is what all of them look like. It won't create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks on adjacent properties. Again, that picture is to show you that everybody else seems to be at a very high lot coverage and stuffed in based on these old small lots on some of the prime waterfront down there. And finally, that it won't impose substantial detriment to the immediate neighbors. Not only do I represent that it won't, but both immediate neighbors have a letter. I don't know if they're in your files. They should be. Both of them were in full support and both of them, I think, were considered when your planning department recommended a positive finding. So I have Abby here to answer any questions you have. I have Steve online, I believe, to answer. Nope. We'll answer any other questions regarding that, but that would be the nature of our presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I Any butter, sir? Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Farrell.
What is the dimension of the deck?
Five feet wide. And it's fourteen feet long. And that's where it comes into, is it fourteen point five?
Sixteen point four.
Okay.
So it's eighty-two square feet.
Eighty-two square feet.
Thank you.
Originally, we were, I think it goes to me nine point five, and then there was a determination that it could go to the side without increase, without the necessity of a sideline variance. So.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
It's second floor. Candle in her deck.
I call it first floor. I know that Aaron's report calls it a second floor. So I call it it's a one story house, as far as I see it. It's off the main living area. It is elevated because of the nature of how the house is located on the water. But I do have a we have a picture of that? I have a picture, I think, from the tax record, but.
Oh, yeah, we have this picture on. There's a photo on the butter letter, if that's in the file.
I can show it to you, but the plate that was put there that was allowed by the building inspector when you put in a slider and they make you permanently fix something to the door. So
Oh, so it's never.
It is plated on the first floor. It is not plated on the second. And the second floor bedroom is not a slider, is windows. So I'm quite sure that
Lord, thank you. So when was this work was done prior to the current owner purchasing the property?
The the renovations were done by Mr. Kelly, but it was under the exact same footprint of the original original building. He required no variances to reshingle and redo.
So essentially, he had a like for CRMC purpose, repair permit. So he didn't have to. There's no existing modifications in that case, and that means it was just for repair of like kind.
I believe so. I wasn't involved in that in early stages, but yeah, it was my understanding from talking to him that there was always a small deck there. It was just completely useless. So rather than build the small, small deck back, he put in the slider. He got permission from the building inspector to adequately safeguard it from being used by blocking it. So you didn't walk out into space and to come here and apply and ask to put the five foot deck in as opposed to whatever the footprint was on the original.
And the reason why I didn't do that at the same time would be like, why would he just do it all at the same time? Just because of this process here?
He didn't have to come here to go to coastal because he already had the preexisting one approved. And then he I think it was just the reality when he was there that it would be much more usable if it was increased. That's my understanding.
Okay.
And as you know, we need to I believe, I'll ask Abby, but I believe we need to modify our ascent. But we can't modify our ascent at coastal until the town says that you would have permission to go forward under what you're trying to build. It wasn't necessary in the first instance because it already existed. The increase now will have to go to coastal.
You want to get held up, so you just.
For a modification ascent. Well, they actually make you come here first. If a variance is required, Coastal Resources makes us come to the town first. Originally, to start the process, no variance was required, so they just did the rest of it.
Familiar.
I know you.
No, I mean, makes sense because you don't want to hold up your project. So.
And one more question. Sure. What is the before and after lot coverage? It's forty-seven point something up to forty-nine point something.
Yep, it's forty-seven point eight existing and forty-nine point nine proposed.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Sir? The butters or interested parties? Anybody online? Letters in the file? Questions? All right. That said, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve the three point two foot rear setback dimensional variance and the lot coverage increase to forty-nine point nine percent of total. I also move that we, as part of this motion, move that we approve the special use permit. It's my rationale for approval is that the hardship is not the result, or I'm sorry, the hardship is is the hardship being mitigated is the result of the unique characteristics of the property, not the result of any prior actions taken by the applicant. Granting the variance does not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And the five foot wide deck constitutes a minimal relief, providing about as small a deck as you could get. With regard to the special use permit, this modification does allow for adequate space for fire protection, provides adequate light and air between buildings, does not alter the or adversely affect neighboring properties and does not impose any substantial detriment to the public or immediate neighbors.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chapelle, are you satisfied with the?
I am.
Trying to make sure I know that doing them together is.
It's fine. I don't expect to be like we just know there's some case law out there that says variance first, then special use permit. That's what he's.
Should we do it as two separate motions?
You could. It's up to you, sir. You.
I believe that it's proper to do it as two separate motions. I also understand that I don't expect appeals or problems in this case with all the neighbors.
I've kind of changed our way of doing things here. So we're a little so since last, you know.
Mr. Chairman, may I amend the motion I just made?
So yeah, I believe you can amend it without having to restate it if the clerk's satisfied to amend to 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 limit that to.
I think you can amend to take them one at a time for the two variances first. And then if successful on the variances for the same rationale to state the special use permit.
So 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 Mr. Chairman, I'd amend my motion to remove reference to the special use permit and retain all of my comments relative to the dimensional variance and lot coverage variance.
Okay. So I could ask for a second.
Second.
Okay. Do we need to do the other one now?
No, we have to. On this one.
And then we're sorry. Or ask for discussion, actually.
Okay, any more? Any discussion on the matter? We're good. We'll put it to vote now.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly, when you lead off? Vote.
We can just call it up and down, but I.
Ben Farrell votes affirmative or I?
I approve.
Paul Lorenzo votes aye. Or Marco Di Martino votes aye.
We're approved on that one. Chair. Chairman approves, excuse me.
Unanimous. And so now a second motion, it would be in order following the the language previously submitted with regard to the special use permit.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we also approve the special use permit. As we, as this applicant or is this application allows adequate space for fire protection, provides adequate light and space between buildings, does not alter the character or adversely affect neighboring properties and does not improve a substantial detriment to the public or immediate neighbors.
Any of the second?
Second.
All in favor? Discussion, discussion, or discussion, excuse me. Any discussion? Any more discussion?
I think Ben said enough.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. My apologies for the laws changing every thirteen days these days and trying to get you all procedurally in us. It's crazy.
We'll get it sooner.
They're good changes, so.
Yeah, but it's full time job monitoring these days.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
All righty. Next item on the agenda, we have Jonathan Casale for Matthew Leskisa, a property located at Seventeenth and Edge Drive. Tax assessment at forty-nine lot sixty-six. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance to install a swimming pool five feet from the rear property line. Ford, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Angela Svisum. I'm his father, so I'm representing him today.
Address?
Uh, Seventeenth and Edge Drive.
All right, tell us what you, what he's looking to do.
I put a pool in the back of the house. Uh, twelve by thirty-five.
So. Reason being, it's, you know, explain us the reason behind the, the five feet, you know, the need for the variance, the five-foot variance.
Well, I don't know much about it because they just sent me, uh, something on my phone. I just looked at it. But basically, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be closer to the wall away, away from the house. If I, if I could explain it anyway. It's gonna be a drain in the front by, by the wall next to the house, so they're gonna have a lot of, more like four to five feet, I believe.
Any chance you can zoom in on that? Excuse me, that photo a little bit? Thank you. Questions from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. What is the, uh, rear yard setback uh, variance being requested?
Add that here, too.
Oh, uh, five feet. Five feet with twenty-five feet from the, it's a twenty-five-foot variance. Uh, the, the rear setback requirement is thirty feet. About, if, if you read the staff report, I read, I described the application, this is the only part of the, uh, the yard that can be utilized for a pool.
Yeah, so the, so the dimensional variance being sought is twenty-five feet. Thank you. That's all, the only question I have, sir.
Any others?
Uh, I was just wondering, do, do we know what type of fence or what type of separation it'll be?
I'm not sure. I think they're gonna have a, a automatic cover, I believe. And the fence wise, it's a wall behind, uh, you're gonna have a fence in the front where leading up to the pool, but everything's covered on both sides of the pool. So you could put a fence on both sides.
It looks like there's some, some shrubs, there's some trees back there.
There's shrubs and there's the cement blocks on the, the back, so they're gonna go as close as possible to that wall.
Just wondering how much the neighbor will see of.
Nothing at all. It's very private. It's got albatross trees in the back, which is like twelve feet high, so you can't see anything. Have you?
Question for Aaron. Does your further clarification on the pool apron, is that included in, it's not included in a setback? Apron, like a patio's lot coverage of aprons?
No, no, usually, we usually, uh, uh, apron is landscaped, which doesn't apply. But there are certain, sometimes the apron is not landscape, it's, it's more like a concrete area, like a concrete, concrete slab.
So that, so this is basically you take the dimensions from the edge of the pool?
Yeah.
Correct.
I have one quick question. Uh, how, how high is this retaining wall that's in the rear?
Uh, good, seven feet, seven, eight feet. It's solid. I'm from New York. You must know my accent, right?
Property really slopes down into the water there.
Any other questions from the board? Butters, interested parties? Letters in file? Good?
Nothing online.
You have a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Oh, no, I haven't made the motion yet.
No, I started.
Uh, 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 Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the dimensional variance um, of twenty, of rear setback. Yeah, a dimensional variance of twenty-five feet on the rear setback, uh, for the following reasons. This hardship is the result of, uh, characteristics, unique characteristics of this property. There's no other place to put the swimming pool. Uh, septic system is in front of the house, slopes down pretty severely. Uh, that would make it very difficult to put it there. The hardship is not the result of prior actions of the applicant. Um, granting the variance does not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area. As noted, there's a retaining wall behind, um, uh, uh, along the rear lot line. It's something like ninety feet from that lot line to the, um, house, to the, a budding house to the west. And, uh, this is a, a reasonable relief for a reasonably sized pool. And the denial of this request would result in, uh, more than a mere inconvenience.
Can we get a second?
Second.
He's my neighbor.
Oh, we kind of, uh, we missed that part, we did not. We missed the bus there. Can we back the bus up? Are we gonna? Yeah, but it's not.
Well, that's, that's for discussion amongst the, the board.
How do we, how do we reverse the bus?
We could reverse the bus. Uh, if, if, again, if the clerk's happy with the language, we won't uh, ask Mr. Farrell to repeat it, but, um, if we could, uh, table a motion uh, at the direction of the chairs, the prerogative of the chair, and if no one objects, you can accept the testimony.
Does anybody object to postponing the oath, the motion? Okay, we'll pause it there. Can you see your name and address for the, uh, for the record, sir? If you could speak into the.
And if you could. And if you could address, uh, to the microphone, sir, if you could use the microphone.
He's, I'm literally his next door. I'm on the, yeah. My concern is, his land, the player is putting the, putting the swimming pool is about ten fifty pin, higher than my land. And if, anytime there's an accident, water overflows or anything, all I can see is the water running to my house, literally, literally. Because I'm, I'm lower, about between ten to fifteen pin. Just the land itself, but his swimming pool is going to be even higher. So that's my biggest concern. That's the only concern I have. Now, how?
So, I apologize.
How safe is this? So the water overflows and accidents do happen, whether you like it or not. My concern is the water flowing into my house from the swimming pool.
And you, you live across the street?
No, no, next, next door, literally next.
Are you uphill or downhill?
We are next to each other. It would be, house is literally like this. His, his house is over here and the land slopes down.
Yeah.
His pool is going to be here and our, my land would be about ten, fifteen pins lower.
I, I, you know, I don't, I understand the concern of water. I mean, I think you're, I'd be more concerned with, with stuff you already have, like your natural runoff from the land above you opposed to the pool that's recessed in the ground. It can really, it's not an above ground where it could just kind of implode, right? So I think if they forget to turn the water off or something, it might seep out and, but I don't think, in my opinion, I'm not an expert on. But if you just look at the natural grades, I mean, what, what, how much water, I guess, would be the worst-case scenario that you'd expect to overflow on your property?
I don't, I don't know. We do, I had it, we, I don't, I don't have a swimming pool. My neighbor never had a swimming pool before, so I don't.
Condition are you concerned about the swimming pool doing? Like, is it gonna blow out? Like, it's, it's in, it's in the ground, right?
Right.
So I, I mean, I think my concern would be if it was, you know, if you're downhill and you're directly affected, but I think by the time, even if I don't know what possibly could.
Overflows, underflows, I don't know. That's.
I don't know. I, I, I put a pool in there.
I'm, I'm not an expert in swimming pool. I never had one, so.
Say something. Yeah, I don't know if this is something we can really, like, that doesn't really pertain to us as far as the concern. I think that would be, I mean, I would probably just chat GPT or Google, you know, has a in-ground swimming pool ever leaked thousands of gallons of water. Usually it would migrate down, right? I, I, this is new to me, so I don't.
I, I think you're right, Mr. Chair, that, that it's, it's really a question for the building official. Um, well, you know, in, in, in issuing a permit for this, there's gonna be questions about, uh, fencing for safety. There's gonna be questions about the pumps, the drains, the, um, you know, when, when it does drain, when it's emptied. Um, you know, how does that affect water flow? All of that is sort of the building permit process. And I think that's probably a conversation you could have with the building official to, to assuage any concerns you might have. But it's, it's, you know, this, this board is really just about the location, not the construction.
I'm not going to be called to the building permit office.
I'm sorry?
This, I mean, I, I'm not part of building permit. I'm not going to be called there. I got a letter from the zoning board about this, but I don't think.
I don't. Having a pool and, I don't know if there's an auto cover or not, having the auto cover, the only thing that happens is if it's got the auto cover on there, there's a pump that goes on top and that just pumps out rainwater. So it's, there's no any more, any more, any less water that's falling onto the, the same property. It's just, it's getting dispersed in the same manner. If it falls, i- if the rainwater's falling on the pool and it has to get pumped off the cover, whether the pool is there or not, still falling the same footprint, right? If the pool, I think there's more problem with the pools being too high sometimes. You have to pump the water out because it has to be the, the median height of the skimmer. Usually when you're putting them in, they're also susceptible to all the codes. If it's gunite, the rebar and gunite is usually tougher than concrete. I mean, it's tough drill. It's, it's very, there's a lot of rebar, a lot of, a lot of grounding. There's a lot of infrastructure for the pool. And, you know, in the past, when they put them in, water tables in the pools are pumped out. Here and there, you'll hear of somebody's pool because the buoyancy, natural buoyancy of the water table pushed the pool out of the ground. So if this helps answer your question, I think the pools are stronger than the wall, you know. I would be very, you know, I wouldn't be concerned about the pool imploding or the water coming out of your property. I think if anything is draining gutters at this point, you know, I don't think it's gonna be any different, you know, but I think I'd lean on the, I, I would probably just look it up online and look at the statistics of it, but I understand the concern of, of runoff, but I think, you know, you guys are pretty familiar with that on that, that gradient you have there with, with that, those two streets stacked. It's a pretty significant grade, you know, and so I don't know. I don't know if that helps you, but I, I, I personally wouldn't be concerned. You know, I'm not just saying that to, to, to make this go away, but I, but, you know, I'm pretty familiar with.
Well, the way it is, if overflow or some, the water cannot go down because of the houses. Only what are going to leak is come to.
Yeah.
To my, the way it is, physically, the way the land is. The only place if there's a overflow or any leakage, only place water can go is to my land.
I, I, I don't know if we can really vote on that. I guess my other follow-up to that would be if, if this was a common issue, then there would probably be some sort of secondary backup pools that would overflow. They'd probably have another chamber around them if this was a common occurrence of overflowing, but I don't think I would be concerned again, but I think I direct you to maybe seek out Heather in the building department and see what, or the building inspector, right, in, in address. If there's any past issues.
It's a good twenty-five yard away from pool. It's not gonna be right there. We, the pool is right behind the house. And he's, there's, there's a lot of space between this and this house.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not gonna go that way. It's not, right. It's gonna go straight down.
Yeah, I, I, you know.
And they have, they have a special, uh, drainage system next to the house with the water system open. So I don't see any problem close to his house.
Yeah.
Do you have the, the guy who's making, building the pool, is he here or?
No, he's not here.
I, I, I guess for the time being, I think it's more like, you know, and, and something that, you know, we, we can't, I don't believe this is something that weighs heavily on our decision because I don't, I haven't really heard about that in the past, but I don't know if anybody else here wants to comment on the concern for the pool overflowing. I, I think if anything, the overflow would be you left the hose on and it's leaking out, but I don't think it's gonna, it doesn't leach in the ground. And if it does, it, you know, privately flood their basement first, but, uh, for, for the sake of the meeting and everybody here that's in attendance, I think I direct you to the building department and your neighbor to kind of work that out. I, I don't know if you have any other suggestions, if that's not appropriate.
No, I think, I think he, he makes a good point, which is he doesn't have a right necessarily to appeal or, or, you know, uh, debate the issuance of a permit, but I, I just, I think just for the satisfaction of understanding what the building official looks at and understanding, uh, you know, what the standards are, it may be reassuring, you know, even though, even though there's not really a process beyond this to, to, to prevent the neighbor from building the pool.
Yeah.
Um, and, and this, this board is certainly, um, within its rights to take into consideration the comments that were just offered and, and, and use that, uh, when you consider your vote.
It's, it's already.
No, that's it.
It's a, just one of, it's a gunite pool, I assume, right? With the auto cover, cement pool, concrete. Yeah, so I mean, I think for their investment of the pool, you know, if, you know, it's probably, just the pool is probably eighty thousand dollars, so I would assume there, it's, you know, between the building codes and the, their investment in the pool, they're gonna want to make sure it operates properly. You know, the, I think the cover alone is like twenty thousand dollars, so, so. I've just, I use this to try to reason, you know, I, I think, you know, with their investment, they want to buy some quality that's gonna suit their needs and work and not, not cause a nuisance, you know. But again, I think there's, there's a lot of codes, a lot of, a lot of inspections that go on with pool building and, you know, been part of a few and seen firsthand, it's, it's pretty tedious stuff.
I, I just wanted to express my concern. I'm not opposing or agreeing or anything. I'm just explaining where I'm.
I think it's good to get on the record and your concern, and I think I, that's, I could do is recommend that you follow up and, and just, or inquire within the building official, and that would help maybe ease your concerns, you know, um. Maybe if there's any mitigation or something between you and the neighbor, I, I think that's the best route, so.
Appreciate your time. Can I ask when you plan on building the pool? Is it gonna happen before the winter? Is it gonna be in the spring?
I, I guess the only other piece of the puzzle here is you can, we can make sure that, you know, there, there's always adequate erosion controls during excavation processes and stuff, but making sure that I don't know if you can put a condition on that, but that, that the neighbor's land is, is, you know, adequately protected from, from runoff and, and loom. Is that something that would make sense? In, you know, that's what my, my concern would be more or less, that process of sedimented stuff leaping into your yard.
My, my assumption, and maybe Aaron can weigh in, is that that would be a requirement of, of the permit anyways, so I don't, I don't necessarily know if.
Yeah, so it's an erosion plan, so.
Yeah.
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah.
Some guys just do it a little haphazardly, but I think understanding that, maybe just, we voice it with your, you know, your son to make sure that it's, it's really a very inexpensive, what they call a wattle. It's a, it's a tube of hay and you drag it, stake it into the ground and basically it filters off any runoff, lets the water seep out without any contaminants, meaning soils or cross-contamination of loom or fill, so to speak. But usually, it's all part of the process of doing that. So, I, I hope that helps, I'm.
So, so if that's, if that's all the questions of the board, then you can, um, re, re, uh, posit the motion and, uh, and second it again.
Do I need to restate?
You don't need to restate it. I think we're good with the clutter. As previously moved.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'd like to reinstate the motion made prior.
I'd like to reinstate the second I made prior.
Any other further discussion? I agree with Mr. Farrell, Mr. Kelly. We vote? Let's vote, make a motion. No, not cheese.
All those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? All right, he's approved.
Thank you very much.
Your neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number three, last petition of the evening. All right, number three, last petition of the evening. Wayne Gibson. Applicant owner for property two sixty-nine Riverside Street, being tax assessors map fifteen lot fifty-seven. Applicant seeks special use permit in dimensional variances to alter a structure with a non-conforming use in residential zone located within the front and side setbacks.
Hello?
Welcome. You.
I'm Wayne.
Address for the uh record, please?
Alright.
Name and address for the record, please?
Kelly address is thirty-seven Riverside Street, Portsmouth. Wayne Gibson.
Mr. Gibson, can you just raise that microphone up just a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Vincent Pacifico. Um, I'm the architect on the project, forty-five Mount Hope Ave, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Jason Silva, looking at building the project and making sure uh to move forward properly. Let's go.
Alright, yeah, tell us what you'd like to do.
So.
Go ahead.
Alright, I'll start. I'll, I'll introduce myself. So this is a small cottage in uh the Island Park neighborhood of Portsmouth. Um, it's uh about eight hundred and twenty-five uh square feet. Right now, it's a very small cottage, one and a half stories. Um, and the scope of the project is to enlarge the building, uh add an addition, uh renovate the interior. Um, and it's a very tight site. Um, it's only two thousand forty square feet s- uh of site right now. Um, right now, we have eight hundred and twenty-five square foot of footprint on the site and we're looking to expand slightly and we're gonna be going over uh a couple of the setbacks, um as you can see in the proposed um site plan. Uh, there's three different uh pieces we're looking for. Uh, we're looking for a front yard setback uh variance, uh side yard setback, and then allowable uh lot coverage. Uh, the two setbacks we're gonna be building in are also over existing footprint. So we're not adding additional footprint on the front of the lot and the side of the lot. Uh, on the image to the right, it's gonna be on the top is the front on Riverside Street. We're building over that piece, going a little uh closer to the street, but it's gonna be over the existing building and then we're gonna be building a little bit to the right um on the second story above that existing uh piece of the building. Um, we do go, we are extending the second, uh second floor deck on the rear, but it's not in a setback. That's the one area that causes um a increase in lot coverage. Which we're going from forty square, forty percent lot coverage to forty-one percent, so it's only a one percent lot coverage difference. Um, like I said, it is a substandard lot, so our setbacks as shown here have gone down um on the sides, the front and the rear. Um, along with our uh allowable coverage uh goes up from twenty percent coverage to thirty-six and a half percent. So we're slightly over the percentage that we are allowed, but we're looking to increase by one percent. I'll let Wayne ask any or any additional.
Yeah, um, my wife and I decided to do this um to facilitate us as we get older. Um, my mobility is an issue. And this is certainly gonna be a better design for me, um and a smaller property, which we need. We're doing everything in compliance. Uh, I mean, I should say, we're doing everything to um stay in line with the, with the decor of the neighborhood and the spirit of the neighborhood as well. Any questions for me? I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Farrell?
Uh, um, uh, what is the front yard setback variance being requested?
Uh, let me take a look right now. So our front yard. Uh, we currently have uh three foot eight. Um, actually, let me take one look. Hold on a sec. Uh, right now, we're seeking a front yard setback of ten inches.
And then the side yard, that's on just one side?
Yes, the side yard is only on the east side of the property.
And that setback variance is?
Uh, that one, we're asking for one foot four inches, which was previously um two feet.
Are you considering the eaves on this?
Yes, that is, that is the.
Can I speak for a moment? So basically, we are following the footprint and in Portsmouth lot year, you already know, we're allowed to have a two inch, we need to have a hem. Basically, all we're asking is to make our, our jets and our soffits, sorry about the old name. Sorry, our jets and our soffits a little bigger. So that's what we're asking for. We're not actually, actually asking to go over the footprint of the foundation, which is asking to give ourselves bigger eaves and soffits and that's all we're asking. In the back of the house where the deck is, well, it's so close, we figured we'd bring that up. In the back of the house where the deck is, we're only asking for one percent to give uh, I forget what it is, a twenty or twenty-four, thirty, yeah, we're asking for uh eleven extra square feet on the rear deck is pretty much what we're really asking for, other than going up that we are obviously have to go for variance because the property is already encroaching on the setbacks.
Correct. What I'm really wondering is, is, is what is the number? I, 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 I recognize that you're staying within the same footprint, but I guess there, there's still a, a variance being requested. So I'm just wondering, what is the variance? So when a motion is made, we know what number to log in there.
Like the, 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 the front yard, so to speak, is this, this correct? The front yard is two foot, two foot, ten inch variance? The side yard assumed to the, to the north is six inches, it's?
Correct, yeah, that we're going over because that's the footprint from the side.
Is that the north, is that request for the side, for the north, excuse me, side yard? Is that because of the, the, the jets or the eaves, you know, the, the overhang or is that the building?
That's the building. What you see on the plan is the existing building.
So we're, so we're six inches beyond the existing build?
Existing as well.
And then that's not including the soffits?
Correct.
So the soffits stick out. What's, what's the, what's the, what's the soffit that's gonna?
Okay, we're going uh, what, fourteen?
Fourteen, twelve or something like that, but that, is it, are those even included on?
No, it's not included in the calculation. You have eighteen inches overhead.
Used to be or no?
It's always been eighteen inches.
No, 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 did it used to be including?
Nope, nope. You can have eighteen inch overhead.
What's that?
We used to do that, so that, that was when George was with.
Okay, right, well, I, it's not a wood.
Used to be.
Yeah, so I see a, I, I, I show a front yard setback or front yard variance request of two foot, ten inches is, is.
That's correct.
And the side yard variance request is?
Six inches.
Six inches. And then the lot coverage um uh variance is one percent or?
So it, it's one percent over existing, four point five percent over the maximum.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
What's the average spot coverage in this area?
It's.
Human.
It's very, it's.
No, I'm just curious.
It's very, they're all, it's very similar. All the, all the houses are very similar in nature.
They're tiny lots. Yeah. Your contractor's gonna love you. Great design. It looks, it's, nothing really stands out to me. Any other questions from the board? Then again?
I'll, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Hold on.
We need a butter.
Oh, oh, sorry.
You online?
We have nobody that has raised their hand. So no.
So.
If we have pulled up the picture of what they're gonna put in the back on the, where the porch is gonna be, do you have a picture of that, of what they?
Which side?
That, that's perfect right there. Down a little bit. That's perfect, yeah.
You made good use of that design.
It looks really nice.
Good. Do you have any questions on what we're referring to?
Well, it's better, better idea what it's gonna look like.
Want to see anything else?
It's pretty good. Uh, that's, that's good. I'll invite me for the barbecue.
Yeah, it's good. Are you ready to make a, make a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion. In this case, we're, we're, we're doing two motions.
Say, yeah, same as before. We'll start with the dimensional variance motion and then move on to special use if that's approved.
Very good. So, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the the dimensional variance, a front yard dimensional variance of two foot, ten inches and a side yard dimensional variance of six inches. Um, the, the, the hardship being mitigated here in, in um improving and renovating this structure is the result of the unique characteristics of the, of this property. It is not the result of any prior action by the applicant. Granting this ver- the, these variances do not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Uh, in my opinion, this is a very small ask in terms of relief. As noted, the lot coverage is only going up one percent and uh only four point five percent over the allowable maximum. Um, uh, making this a, a case of being the least relieved necessary. And the denial of this request amounts to more than a mere inconvenience.
Thank you. Any other, the second?
Second.
Any more discussion on the matter? Did you, did I, what's going on, Heather? So we can vote and make a?
We can vote.
Ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All uh, against? Think we're approved.
And, and the, the.
Oh geez, sorry, jumped the gun.
The special use.
System.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I make a motion that we approve the special use per, that we approve the special use permit. Um, uh, as this renovation allows adequate space for fire protection, provides adequate light and air between buildings. Does not alter the character or adversely affect neighboring properties. Um, and does not impose a detriment to the public or immediate neighbors.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Opposed? Approved. Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with it. Nice work, your design.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we.
Just have a, for future reference, Gio. Do we need to ask for a butters and interested parties again for the special use permit vote or not?
No.
No, uh, it's, that, that's really, yeah, so once, once you
Once they're done.
Close the public portion of that and then you can make whatever motions, however many motions, all that, but that's, at that point, it's really just discussions amongst yourselves. So you, you, yeah, you take that comment on the, on both, that's fine.
Alright, I thought that was the answer. I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
You adjourn? After vote? All in favor?
Aye.